Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, August 13th at approximately 7:00 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt and I am joined by my fellow board members, Chris Weider and C.C. Van Tyn. We are also joined by our town administrator, Blythe Robinson. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcast to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You know, when I come in fast in the meeting, I tend to get through that in about 15 seconds.
Yes.
Race and still run inside.
Well, I was enjoying the amplification of your, of your voice. Like, we were, the whole room was sort of looking around like...
Ben Scully feels in Dodger Stadium now.
Really powerful what's going on right now.
Versus Red Sox game's next.
Let's not get crazy. So it's been a little while since we've gotten together. Blythe, we have a pretty full agenda this evening. Would you mind taking us through it?
We do. First, we have Todd Lindmark is here to talk about the sale, the current refunding of bonds from 2011. Then we have appointments to the Energy Committee to clarify those, followed from our last meeting. We have a street naming for a private street, proposed for the Enclave 40B project, and then a request to name a new private street, Ox Pasture Way off of North Street. We are looking for approval to hold the 29th Annual Rodman Ride for Kids Ride on September 21st, and then issuing a one-day liquor license to the Norfolk Library to host a brew night in late September. To consider establishing the dates and the rates for the parking permits for Liberty Lane and Old Town Hall, a lottery for those. To consider approving a request for the use of Town Hill by the Girl Scouts for their annual kickoff party in, on September 10th. And then for discussion, we have discussing the board's intention to lay out various streets for acceptance at the Fall Town Meeting. To discuss the police substation located at 117 Main Street. Discussion of the structure of the Fall Town Meeting. And a discussion regarding possibly implementing a public comment period for the board's future agendas. We have a number of warrants to be signed and minutes to be approved and released.
Very good, thank you. So the first item of our agenda tonight is to please consider awarding the sale of the current refunding of 2011 outstanding bonds. Mr. Lindmark, please join us.
Thank you for having me. In the package, you should have a little presentation in your package.
Tap 2.
Oh, it's in a tab. Good lord, you people are so organized.
So just kind of a quick overview, bonds, debt, and how that works with the municipalities. Municipal bonds, the town authorizes the debt, the borrowing at a town meeting for capital projects, and that's required with a two-thirds town meeting vote. After the debt is voted or authorized at the town meeting, the town can borrow funds to pay for the capital projects, similar to what we've done with the police and safety building with the regional dispatch and the school previous. The length of the borrowing for the project typically has a maximum number of years, and that's defined actually through Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44. So if you have a particular project, whether it's a building, a roof, roadways, or what have you, there's a predefined list of the number of years that you can have the bonds going out for those things. Next page. Town issues general obligation bonds to obtain financing. Bids are submitted under, by the underwriters on the date of the sale. Town awards the bonds to the underwriter who bids the lowest, and that's based on the TIC or the true interest cost, which is the actual cost to the town. Bonds are purchased by underwriters. Proceeds are deposited in our town's account, and we'll need to repay the bonds over a predetermined period, again, defined by Chapter 44 for the length of time. Municipal bonds. Bond proceeds include the par amount of the bonds, which is the actual amount borrowed, and any premium. And the premium, there's quite a lot of information on premiums on the next page. And what is a bond premium? That's funds that are paid by the underwriter to the town in addition to the amount of the bonds borrowed. It's usually a result of market rates are low, interest, bidders want to put a higher rate on the bonds, so they offer additional cash or the bond premium to the town. Again, bonds are awarded to the bidder who has the lowest true interest cost, and at our time, we had several bidders, and the premium from Fidelity was the best, with the true interest cost being the best for us. Bond premium given to the lower, the true interest cost of the bonds can also be considered proceeds, but does not have to be repaid. And as well, the bond premium can be used to reduce the amount of bonds borrowed for another capital project, which the town can borrow for. So in the instance where we had the police safety building, we had bonds that were issued, premiums were issued with that as well, but that reduced the amount of borrowing that we needed for that, so it just went towards the project cost. Next page. The bond proceeds are limited to the project cost itself, cost of issuance for the project, which is the cost to prepare, issue, and market the bonds, such as bond counsel, rating agencies, financial advisors, and paying agents. And then a recap of what happened with our refunding. On August 6th, we sold 8,400,000 general obligation bonds, refunding our original bond amount of 15,000, I'm sorry, 15,673,000 general obligation bonds, originally dated March 15th, 2011, maturing 2020 and 2031. Again, the two dates coincide with the timing of the amount that you can borrow, or the extension of time on those amounts of borrowed. The outstanding balance of the 2011 bonds were for both the elementary school and for the Spruce Road well. It'll be dated August 22nd, 2019. What did that do for us? Bonds usually with maturity of longer than 10 years are sold with a call feature. These particular bonds came with that call feature, which allowed us to do what we're doing now. When 2011 bonds were issued, they had the call date effective from March 15, 2019, the point at which the bonds can be redeemed prior to maturity. Town meeting vote is not required for refunding issue, just a select board vote. So net effect to us, they'll be called on October the 1st, sold competitively on August 6th. We received eight bids from various underwriters, and I can go through a couple of those when I give a recap real quick. Lowest bidder was Fidelity Capital Markets. Refunding will produce a net present value of just over $1.5 million to us, or 16.9% savings. Select board are expected to vote the refunding and award the bonds to Fidelity Capital Market at this particular meeting, and then after the call on October 1st, the 2011 bonds will be paid in full, and the refunding bonds will be issued August 22nd, 2019, will replace them. So that's kind of bonds in a nutshell. I also gave a spreadsheet to each of you. This is where we currently are. Does not include the refunding as of yet, because I get this schedule updated once we have the numbers finalized and everything's been approved. So the two items, which would be, if you look at the bottom on the first page, where it says "General Fund Exempt Debt," you see 315, 2011 School. Do you all see that?
Mm-hmm.
So that line item, that's part of this refunding, so that would be refunded out. So that debt, essentially, we're going to be saving 16% on that debt there. And then on the next page, I'm sorry, page 3, they're not numbered, I apologize. Can I do this right? Page 4.
Yeah, it's water debt.
It's the water debt. And it's the third one up from the bottom, 315, 2011, Spruce Road well. Again, if you look at all those numbers going across the sheet, those go away, and that's going to be the amount that we're refunding for that well, which is about $170,000 in principal. Combined with the 7, 7,870,000 from the school, again, that's the 8,400,000 that they're, we are getting refunded. And then with respect to the bids, let's see if I can pass this around. Sorry, I only have the one extra copy. We received, and I'll pass these other copies to you in a second. So we received eight bids. Again, Fidelity Capital came in at the lowest bid offer for us, so that's why with the true interest cost, TIC, you go with the lowest amount. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
So we just wanted to give you all a general overview. I don't think any, I'm not sure any of you have been through this particular issue before, so we felt it was maybe, hopefully it was helpful to just give you a basic sense of what happens, and, you know, these numbers on this spreadsheet are all a bit daunting, but there's a, there's a regular process working with our financial advisor, who's with Unibank, to go through these and look for opportunities where we might have sold bonds at a higher rate and the market is more favorable. With the call, call provision, we could refinance it and simply save money in doing so, and the overall cost to the taxpayers goes down over time. Some of, there's, there's both long-term debt, which these were, and there's also short-term debt. That's more what's in yellow on, on here. And we can have a deeper conversation when we get into the budget process about, you know, as we pay off short-term debt, is there, you know, is there possibilities or opportunities for some of the things the town wants to achieve on projects that we could afford inside the levy, within the general fund annual budget, to keep, keep the amount we spend on these things level, so the tax, cost of taxpayer doesn't go up, but maybe we'll have some opportunities to address some issues like roads or other capital that, you know, we want to catch up on. We, when you set the tax rate, you look at what the overall budget is each year, and you add on those exempt projects as part of the total cost of debt, and, you know, an ideal goal would be to not have that go up over time, is to, as things get done and come off, perhaps that's an opportunity to add other projects that you need to get done in, and we want to look at this on a long-term basis and figure out when those are, so we can plan projects that are being done in a timeframe that's good for the town, but also with an eye towards what it costs our residents, and not having its spikes there that would be difficult for them. So this was just a quick overview. Hopefully, we're not gonna, we haven't overwhelmed you, but we just wanted to give you a taste of it, so we can talk about it more at another time.
Very good. Now, is this something that we should be doing on a more regular or routine basis than we have been in the past?
No, we are. We always do this.
Okay.
So this is just one of those instances where this call feature allowed us to do it with this particular refunding. We had also refunded some 2009 bonds not too long ago, which saved us considerable amount of money as well. So we, I work with the financial advisor as well as Anne Marie Treasurer to make sure, go through, review, is there something else we can get into that's better long-term, because why not refinance if it makes sense? Obviously, you're not going to refinance if you're at a break even or at a positive. It doesn't make sense to do that, but this is constantly something that we always are reviewing.
Very good.
Who's our financial advisor?
The Unibank.
Is there a particular advisor at Unibank?
Margaret. And why is her last name escaping me? I forget.
How long has Margaret been working?
A long time.
So she's had the account for, is that something that people ever...
I think it's like, it's, it's like other consultants, such as engineers or attorneys, if we felt we weren't getting the service that we were looking for, we could certainly put out an RFP. There are other firms doing this work out there.
I just think it's interesting.
Yeah. But the goal is to try, again, try to get the lowest cost for our taxpayer, take advantage of these situations when they come up, and think about long-term within the levy and outside it with excluded projects. When is appropriate time for both the project and the cost to a taxpayer to put them in? Say, if a school's getting paid off, is it time to, you know, put another project in that the town needs to accomplish? We, we're going to look at that, and along with the capital budget we're building, to figure out when those opportunities arise, and help everybody understand that we have, actually have a strategy to all this. It's not just something we came up with. I'd also mention that all this information, we started posting the board's packets on our, on the website. They're under the selectmen's actual page. There's a tab on the left that says Agenda Packets, and both the July 9th and August 13th are up here. So everything that Todd just went through, except for the spreadsheet, is available to people.
And just so, I've been here three years, a little over three years now, working with Margaret, Margaret McLean from Unibank, and being in the financial industry myself previously, working with other individuals in that capacity, whether it was financial advisors for 401Ks, IRAs, bank accounts, whatever, I have full faith and confidence in Margaret and how she's handled herself business-wise, as well as helping us out. She's very informative, on top of the game. I've never had a problem with her. You call her, she gets back to you right away. She's very helpful, especially when it comes to this stuff. She walks you through all the paperwork, all the details. She backs in, changes the schedule to accommodate, because we had to change the sale based on today's meeting, and then we were able to get that all accomplished. So are there others? There could be more fantastic. I find it hard to believe, but just saying, my limited exposure here. I've had nothing but positive.
So we have an awfully long motion in your packet, followed by an awful lot of signing at the end of the meeting.
I'm ready. Chris, did you have any questions or anything you wanted to add?
No, I think it's great. Saving 60% is always a good thing.
Anybody in the audience have a question for Todd?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Blythe and the board for making the packets available on the website. I'm a strong proponent of transparency, and I very much appreciate making the information available. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If nobody has anything else, I will begin this essay. I move that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, to refund all of the town's $15,673,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2011 bonds dated March 15th, 2011, maturing on and after March 15th, 2020, in the aggregate principal amount of $9,190,000, the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. Everybody get that?
Keep going.
I further move that the sale of the $8,400,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2019 bonds of the town dated August 22nd, 2019, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a Division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $9,138,201.21 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on March 15th of the years and in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. For 2020, the amount of $615,000 at a rate of 5%. For 2021, in the amount of $670,000 at the rate of 5%. In 2022, at the amount of $680,000 at a rate of 5%. In 2023, $680,000 in, in the rate of 5%. In 2024, at $685,000 at the rate of 5%. In 2025, in the amount of $690,000 at the rate of 5%. In 2026, in the amount of $690,000 at the rate of 5%. In 2027, in the amount of $690,000 at the rate of 5%. In 2028, in the amount of $685,000 at the rate of 4%. In 2029, in the amount of $675,000 at the rate of 3%. In 2030, in the amount of $650,000 at the rate of 3%. And in 2031, in the amount of $630,000 at the rate of 2%. It's a marathon, not a sprint.
Do you need some water?
I might need it. We further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated July 30th, 2019, and a final official statement dated August 6th, 2019, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. We further move that the bonds shall be subjected, subjective redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. I further move that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(2)12, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. We're almost there. I further move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond councils deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. I further move that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 There you go, this is for you from Blythe.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lindmark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Appreciate the outline and the presentation. The next item we have tonight is to please consider making the following appointments to the Energy Committee, Mr. Anthony Kennedy and John Kent as an associate member. A little background, Blythe?
Sure. I attended the last Energy Committee meeting, at which both gentlemen attended. The committee discussed it amongst themselves and with these, these new folks, and decided to recommend to the board that Anthony Kennedy become the regular member and John Kent become the associate.
Very good. Do we have anybody in the crowd today? Nope. All right, in that case, I will move that the following appointments be made to the Energy Committee, Anthony Kennedy as a regular member and John Kent as an associate member.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next on our list, we have please consider approving private street names as proposed for the Enclave 40B project. Any additional background here, Blythe?
Uh-uh.
No, this is pretty cut and dry.
Mm-hmm. There was some discussion about Avery Street, Avery Way, Avery Court, and as you can see, the developer prefers Avery Way, but it's up to the board.
I like Avery Way.
I think Avery Way sounds good as well.
I love it.
Chris, any thoughts?
No other questions?
In that case, I would move that the board vote to name a new street in the Enclave Development, Avery Way.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good, thank you. Next, please consider approving the name of a new private street proposed as Ox Pasture Way. So I believe we've gotten some pretty good feedback on this, and this is...
We've gotten very good feedback on this.
This has a lot of historical time.
And I don't know if anyone is in the, there's a gentleman in the, in the audience who may wish to speak on it, I'm not sure. Family member.
Hi, my name is, my name is Eric Carlson. I live at 1...
Use the mic, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Carlson. I live at 113 North Street, and we're in the process of subdividing the property. In researching the name for the private way, I was able to get ahold of some deeds, and I've gotten back as far as 1853, and it's been referred to since then as the Ox Pasture. Some of the deeds are extremely difficult to read. The clearest one that I could find was, is back as 1899. And we thought that it would be appropriate that we would refer to it that way.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Far be it for me to go against a document that starts in 18.
No, no, indeed.
No. Chris, any thoughts, comments?
I think it's great. Good day.
Excellent.
In that case, I move that the board vote to name the new private way off of North Street, Ox Pasture Way, as requested by the property owners.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you once again. Next, please consider approving the 29th Annual Rodman Ride for Kids to ride on Norfolk Roads on September 21st, 2019.
I don't have a lot to add. It's, we've run it through, checked with the police department, fire department, everyone's fine with it. I think it's been run a number of times before, there haven't been any issues, so we recommend
The only thing that I would throw up as a concern was, did we ensure that there would be no overlap with any paving that we're planning on being done in that time? Because I know that we are targeting that period or that window for doing...
I will have to check with DPW and just figure out what we need to do to make sure that's...
I highly doubt it, as well, to be sure.
Right. Yep.
Anybody have any other comments, concerns?
I think it's great.
Nope.
All right, in that case, I move that the board approve the use of town roads on September 21st for the Rodman Ride for Kids.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up, we have please consider issuing a one-day liquor license to the Norfolk Library to host a brew night on September 27th, 2019, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM.
So this is a program that the library has put together. They have three breweries who they'd like to have come in and discuss, have a discussion with people about how the brewery, brewery process works in making beer, and talk about what they offer, and offer tastings of these. Nancy has worked with the library and the breweries to obtain all of their required license information, and we have to put together the one-day license, and we recommend approval of it. As you can tell from the packet, it's also been reviewed by the police chief, and he has no issues with it.
Very good. Questions, comments, concerns?
No, none.
Very good. In that case, I move that the board grant a special one-day license for the serving of malts to be drunk on premises to the Norfolk Public Library on September 27th, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Should that, I apologize, should that motion have the time in it or not necessary?
I don't think it's necessary.
Next up, we have please consider establishing dates to hold Liberty Lane and Old Town Hall parking lottery, and rates for permit period October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020.
So in past years, the town has issued parking passes for Old Town Hall, and typically that has been from October 1st. Those permits are good from October 1st through September 30th for the next year, so we're coming up on that timeframe. And last year, the town undertook selling passes for 32 spaces on Liberty Lane to help supplement what was perceived to be a lack of adequate parking for commuters. So we're coming up on both of those, and Nancy reminded me that we needed to double-check with the board. I'm not sure so much on the dates, because I don't see why we would actually change those. Pardon? because I don't see why we would actually change those periods since that's what cycle that we've gotten on. But more importantly, discuss the rates. We're putting together the application, they're going to be available online, a lottery for both locations and people can apply to both. But before we could do that, we would need to make sure what the rates are that people are going to be requesting passes for. So last year Liberty Lane was 105, excuse me, Old Town Hall was $75 a year and for another $5 you could have a second sticker. It didn't mean you could park two cars. It meant that if you and your spouse both had a car and for some reason one needed one one day and to park there and one needed the other the next, either car was allowed to be there. As I understand, for Liberty Lane, it was for a partial year this past year. It was $105. And it was, I understand it was indicated at the time that in the future full year, the price would be $150. Again, with the opportunity for, to spend $5 to have a second sticker so you could choose which car you were parking there on any day.
So if I could just provide a little bit of background, the initiative to utilize Liberty Lane for additional parking was kind of twofold. Initially, you know, we were experiencing some overflow situations with the MBTA lot in the top. As everybody's probably aware, the first lots to fill up are the ones on the lower side by the laundromat. And then the upper lot's the last one to fill. And what we were seeing more of was around 8:30, 9 o'clock train, that lot was getting to 100%. And people were kind of spilling out over into Liberty Lane as it stands, as it stood that day, and getting tickets for that. So we wanted to try to find a way to not only provide some overflow relief to that lot, but also make it specific to residents so that there was some benefit and accommodation for those that actually live in Norfolk. So we came up with the idea, it was a collaborative effort between the town planner, the chief of police, the parking clerk. And we established that that would be a great way to be able to accommodate for all those different contributing factors. One of the things that I brought up as we went through the discussion of how we're going to handle this moving forward, was after our lottery, I think we had 63 applicants about for those 32 spots. After that lottery, I usually take that later train and head up to that upper lot. Those spaces still were not being filled. Those spaces were sitting empty in some cases. And I think that it kind of worked against the intent of having those be used for overflow or for the benefit of residents. So I'm interested to hear the input of the board, but from my perspective, I wasn't necessarily as comfortable with increasing the rates as I more wanted to see those spots be utilized on a more reoccurring and consistent basis.
So are, is the lottery's limited to people in town?
Correct.
So they're getting the benefit?
They are.
But there's still, and they're all, so they've purchased it and, but they're not using it, is what you're saying?
Correct. In some cases, not all cases, but in some cases.
But that's the only reason that there wouldn't, there wouldn't be those slots filled is that the people who've purchased the, aren't using them.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how you regulate for that, right?
Well, the proposal that I came up with was to, instead of having a lottery for paid spaces, was to issue stickers to residents and have it be first come, first served parking instead of paid parking.
So lose all revenue?
Lose all of the $3,000 revenue, yeah.
Still revenue, I mean, just, I'm not saying I'm against losing it, but it's still revenue just because it's only 3,000. 3,000's a lot of money.
Yeah, understood.
So instead, you would have a lottery for, or everybody in town gets a sticker?
You come and get a sticker from the parking clerk and that allows you the ability to park in that spot on a first come, first served basis.
And you don't pay for it?
You don't pay for it.
Because you paid taxes in town and you commute.
Correct.
You have to prove that you're a commuter.
To prove that you're a commuter because somebody could take the sticker and give it to somebody else. It's a fair point.
Crafty. I'm thinking like the criminal all the time, even though the officer's here. If, I mean, maybe there's a limit per, but even then, like, I mean, everybody comes in.
I mean, same thing for if somebody buys a spot and then sells it to somebody else coming from out of town for less than what they pay for MBTA.
Yeah, but at least then we've got the revenue.
And we're still charging for Old Town Hall, right?
We are still charging for Old Town Hall, that's correct.
And this is, these are premium spots, really.
In comparison to Old Town Hall, yeah.
They really are.
Yeah.
I mean, in fact.
Well, they're actually premium in a lot of ways because if you're parked up here, you can get out of the parking lot a heck of a lot faster.
If you're pointing in the right direction.
If you're in the, if you're in the lower lot. So they actually, I consider them a premium spot, actually, even compared to the lower lots.
It takes me less time to walk from my house to the train every day than people who are at Old Town Hall to the train.
Oh, yeah.
So these really are they're better spots. So what do you think it is that's caught? I mean, I like the idea, but I see some holes in it too, but what? It's not, so you're saying that the upper lot is still to capacity? But no longer are people getting ticket? Like, I guess the original premise was to give an advantage to people who are obviously already over encumbered with taxes in town.
Correct.
It's a reasonable rate. It's something, but it's a reasonable rate. But then they have, is it maybe because they're just not used to it yet, or?
Well, there was a little bit of that perception when we first started because we went through a couple of iterations of the signs notifying how that was going to work.
It definitely seems more fuller to me as someone who, you know, I walk out my door and I, or inverse, I get off the train and I go up the steps through that parking lot, through the woods to my house. So it seems, you've been doing it too. Doesn't it seem more full now than?
The Liberty Lane spots you're talking about?
Yes.
I would agree that at some points, they do seem more full than other times. But I do also see times, and I'm not talking about the summer because I know that's a complete outlier.
Yeah.
I do see times when they're probably a half-full for the 9 o'clock train.
We're getting calls from people asking, you know, when's the lottery going to start? When, I don't want to miss the opportunity to apply. I wouldn't say that they haven't been, you know, shutting down our phone lines, so many calls, but I mean, we are, people are interested.
And we're not getting any pushback from residents saying they can't park to go to Walgreens or park to go to Silas or anything. That does not
I haven't gotten any of those, but I can't speak for the town clerk or any other offices that might.
It seems like we have so many spots off, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but.
We intentionally cut it off at that intersection for Meeting House to ensure that businesses were not negatively impacted by people parking there.
And we don't have an overflow in those parking lots as it is? Walgreens or Silas or any of those?
Yeah, there is not another overflow option. And I mean, as everybody's well aware, when we hit the winter and snow management in that area becomes more of an issue, we definitely start to see a lot of that overflow start to occur. And I know that we had a couple of people who wrote in and complained about the lack of availability of parking options in those situations. But this doesn't necessarily relate to that. We're going to have that problem regardless of
Right, that's right. I just, but it's funny because I just, I sort of left there in my head. I'm like, all right, so if you've got, it's solving, the way it's currently set up is solving one problem. What you're proposing solves the same problem. Maybe obviously there's people who would sell them or just give them to their buddy. But, but at least even if they're doing that, it's pulling some from that upper lot down onto those spots. But then it still creates the problem if they're not being used, or even if they are, I mean, is it that the ridership is such that the upper lot is going to fill out anymore, more anyway? And then, what I was thinking was, then is your overflow an opportunity for revenue? I'm always thinking about ticketing people. Don't get me started on the Hill. That's a story for another day, but.
So there is certainly an inherent benefit to residents by A, being able to pay a highly discounted rate to what they would be paying in the MBTA lot. And we are designating spaces specifically for this. So if you pay into this and you get selected in the lottery, you know you will have that space.
Right. And it is closer.
Right.
And we're going to issue a sticker that's a particular color, different from last year, needs to be on that car or on the other car that you tell us.
Like a dump sticker or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, I think as long as there's a demand for it, which it sounds like there still is, why not continue it? I mean, whether it be $3,000 or whatever the town can use it, certainly can help with maintenance, landscaping, maintaining landscaping in the town center. It certainly goes a long way towards that. I mean, if nobody applied for it, I can see us going to your example of saying, let's give them out. But where there's still a demand for it?
There's still sort of a two-for-one for the spots. And people I think would be less likely to hand off the like, if I pay 150 bucks for something, I'm probably less likely, I'm, maybe I'm not using it all of the time, maybe I've figured out something else, but I'm less likely to sell it to someone from Franklin. I mean, unless I sold it for 200. Profit, I suppose, I don't know.
We'll have to scour eBay now.
And send the police up there a couple more times.
More scalping of your parking tickets.
I'm not opposed to the option of continuing to charge. I just wanted to bring up a different option.
Yeah, I mean, that's interesting too, I like that. I mean, I like the idea of giving, of creating an advantage for town people, but I think that the discount creates an advantage, maybe not as much of an advantage as free. But I like, I think of it as long in the same lines as a dump sticker, which I know now we pay for as well, but like, back in the day, right? Like, you remember, you were in town, you got your stickers, let you go and do certain things. I like that, but I do, I wonder how, just the way commuters are, maybe that, I don't know.
And you also want to set a rate tonight, correct?
We do, because people are anxious to know when the lottery starts and they want to know what it's going to cost so they can decide whether they're going to put their application in or not.
Right.
So given the shorter term that we were working with to fit into the cycle, the cost was a little bit less than what we probably established as an annual rate last time around. So I believe, this is what we did last year, 75 and 105?
Correct.
Okay.
And you had asked us for input on that, correct?
Yes.
Did you get a consistent, what did you find?
I got two responses. One board member wanted to charge more for Liberty Lane given that it was a premium location and less for Town Hall. And the other board member preferred to charge little or nothing for Liberty Lane and something along the lines of what we've been doing or a little more for Old Town Hall.
I don't think it's any secret that I am feeling number two there.
But I'm with, I'm with, I'm with you.
And I don't think it was any secret that I was the first one wanting to charge more for Liberty Lane.
There's only three of us.
You have a demand, take advantage of the demand.
Well, you know, the problem was, I got the email and I started thinking about it and I saw a bright shiny object and I toddled away. Like, I was like, that's a great, you know, how much more should it go up? Like, you want to bring revenue in, but you don't want to be, you know, pigs get fat, hogs get slaughtered. You don't want to over ask, right? So then I was like, huh, and then, I don't know, like I said, bright shiny object. And I was like, did you, off I went. Then you're asking and I'm like, oh, yeah, I'm the guy who didn't respond. So.
I was looking for a neat Excel sheet that showed this.
Yeah, no, not with me.
Didn't happen.
Yeah, with color coding and everything, not, not with this guy.
I didn't want to out the non-responders, so I couldn't do this spreadsheet.
Who's this blank? Why is there a blank? Cece.
Sir Rosenberg, something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just have two comments and listening to this. First of all, Kevin's suggestion is the one that would make maximum utilization of the spots. And if that matters, then that's a good idea. The other thing is if there is actually a concern of residents getting stickers or placards and then selling them, one possibility would be putting serial numbers on the stickers and then having a fine if a serial number is sticker is displayed in a car that has non-Norfolk registration. And maybe not worth the effort to do all that, but that is a way of trying to control the possibility of people selling them.
Absolutely.
Aren't stickers stuck to the car? Aren't stickers stuck on the car?
Yeah, they're on the inside of the car.
But the town doesn't walk
And they're sold how?
But the town, the clerk's not going to walk out and put it on your car. They're going to hand it to you and send you on your merry way. And then before you adhere it to your car, that's when the malfeasance takes place.
Well, you could solve that by just issuing, you could issue the ticket to a license plate and therefore the license plates would be on the sticker and that would be the way to control it.
Right, but then you'd have to have somebody.
If you wanted someone to go up there and control it.
Right, and control it. I mean, do you care that much?
At least be the possibility of the control, is what you're saying.
Right.
Right.
That's the way the parking stickers are in Cambridge. Your license plate is on that sticker.
There you go.
On the sticker.
What are you doing between 6:00 and 9:00 in the morning?
Right.
One more question in the back, sir?
I was thinking maybe half of them.
Microphone, please, sorry.
Maybe half of them would still be lottery and the other half for auction. So you can raise revenue for people who really want to have a sticker and they pay more for it. So it could be a compromise, right?
To auction off half of the permits.
Didn't they used to do that with, for charity for some of the spots behind here?
We have two spots behind here that
Those are donated, but they aren't.
Right, but that's great. I love charity, also love revenue. So maybe we could auction some too, like the gentleman said. I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Oh, my name's Sam, I'm up here on Meeting House.
Sam. Sam's probably with me on my complaints about the parking on Meeting House. Which we'll talk about later.
Haven't run an auction for parking stickers before, so I'll have to figure that out.[1548.04] Haven't run an auction for parking stickers before, so I'll have to figure that out, not saying we can't, just got to give it some thought to do it right, do it well.
You're talking about the same area behind Town Hall, right, you're not talking about anything on Liberty Lane, like the permits?
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Oh, sorry, okay.
No, I was just sort of throwing that out apropos of nothing, sort of throwing out the fact that if there's, for charity, there's two, there's probably at least another three or four more back there that, that you could delineate, and, and, oh, another hand went up in the audience, they, I'm going to ignore for a second, and you could delineate for, for, for the town.
Right now, there are three spaces in the back that have a little train sign, and two cars are allowed to park there right now.
Right.
Why there's three signs and two cars, I can't answer for you.
I think they used to have maybe three cars, be my guess, um, but for, but for, I, I wasn't really talking about for-
Right.
Oh, sorry, okay. No, 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 that's, there's no way you could know that I wasn't talking about it, because I hadn't actually indicated-
Got it.
That I wasn't, but I had made, I had seen another-
Mm-hmm.
Bright shiny object, and that is, that's where I ended up. Yep.
Sir Alex, go ahead, sir.
Ernie Alex, forty North Street.
Parking lot out back here. Not yet over here at the time, while I was on the permanent building committee, and one of the roadblocks thrown in front of us by the planning board was the number of parking spots out back. We were able to resign, redesign that whole area, so we made it by one full-size car and a small foreign car. Just walked out there, there are three signs for railroad, and now you're saying you have other spots that are auctioned, not auctioned off, but you get money from charity. That back parking lot, according to the planning board, and I don't see where they've changed anything, has been now made illegal, according to your planning board.
Well, no, the three train spots are the spots that are auctioned off, those are the same spots.
Those spots.
But only two are auctioned off, so that would be your large American and your small foreign car.
Three, three spots out there have a train sign.
But only two-
I went to King Philip, but when you still take one and a half out of three, you come up with one and a half in violation.
But you said that-
And then you're adding more areas to it.
Oh, the one and a half is one car and a small car, I see what you're saying.
That's what we had overage, and now you're talking-
I thought you meant there was, there was actually two cars.
Auctioning off.
I was just throwing, nobody's, it's not on for today.
No, 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 but I'm saying what you're doing right now.
We're talking about up here, I just went off on a, on, on one of my side tangents, nobody's talking about doing that today.
Well, you were, you were, you were talking about the parking lot out back, that's the reason I stood up.
Okay.
And that you've violated the planning board's order for us to build this building.
But I, but I haven't done that, I just said it's interesting.
It's already done, you, you're not even involved in it, it's been done before you were even in selectmen. Those signs were put up there probably five years ago.
Right, but are, so are you saying that the fact of the signs-
And at that time, they made that parking lot illegal, according to the planning board.
So what's the planning board saying?
I think what he's saying is that there was a designated number of parking spots that were required to be able to build the building the way they were going to build it, so the planning board enforced them having to put a specific number of parking spots out there. What Mr. Alex is saying is that, sorry to interrupt.
Right.
What he's saying is that if we're designating two of those spots for use outside of the use of Town Hall, that's now not in conformance with what we were previously identifying as a requirement.
So you have to look at the law, so is it that there has to be specific, like, so that many people theoretically have you ever seen that many people?
Well, it's like, for a shopping mall, certain number of spaces for, or a restaurant, and so it's-
Right, you have a certain number of, like, handings kept, and-
Same thing applies, I mean, I put an, I, I put what I hope is a very nice letter on one card today, saying, "We don't have you down as one of the two that'd gotten these in the charity auction before, please make other arrangements, or come see me if you think I'm giving you this letter in, in error." Um, it's generally not full back there, but Ernie's correct, if, if they have to have a certain number of spaces for the building, for its highest use at any one time, then we are by selling two spaces where-
That are not being used by Town Hall specifically.
I see what you're saying.
Right.
So we'll, we'll definitely look into that, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so back to permit parking, we do need to set some rates for Liberty Lane and for Old Town Hall, because I think we're kind of on the same page now, and that we would like to keep some amount of money, um, coming in from these spots. Uh, so we'll start with Old Town Hall, last year at seventy-five dollars with five dollars for an extra sticker, Chris, I believe you had a recommendation?
You know, Blake, do you have those recommendations that I gave you? I couldn't find them on my email.
Uh, I think it was a hundred and fifty was your-
A hundred and fifty for Old Town Hall?
I'll double check.
I think that's right, I think you doubled it, right? Because I remember seeing that come through too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
And if memory serves, Old Town Hall is pretty full on a reoccurring basis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it definitely is.
Um, okay, so if we were to put-
A hundred and fifty.
And then what do we have for the Liberty Lane?
You'd recommend a four-eighty.
Four-eighty, and the current rate for the MBTA lots for a year is what, eight?
Is eighty dollars a month, so nine-sixty a year?
Nine-sixty, right.
So a half of what you'd be paying in the MBTA, with dedicated availability.
Right.
Right, so that was my thought.
I like those. So let me ask you though, what do you, do you think the market will bear that?
I think it would.
I don't know, I mean, a young professional is now being asked to put that up in one fell swoop, as opposed to stretching that out over the course of a year, that might be a deterrent.
We'll see.
So of the, we're talking, I think, about the Liberty Lane, because I don't think that, that the, that the one-fifty from seventy-five would do it, but you, of, there were sixty-three minutes-
We could also split that, we could also split that, the payments, make it two payments instead of one.
Oh, that's true.
If you didn't want to make it four-eighty a year, you could ask them to put two-forty, two-forty.
Yeah, just, it's some extra administrative work to make sure we get that difference from-
It's a five-dollar additional fee if you want to pay it out over two payments.
Uh-huh.
Shouldn't be that, shouldn't be that.
I've been mining that bottom line all the time, huh?
I'm a swamp Yankee, I'm telling you, right now, I can do-
You could split it into two payments if you were worried about the ability for people to make the-
I think it would be interesting, because you, you were, you indicated-
I think compared to nine-sixty, it's still a bargain.
It is a bargain, I think-
It brings in some revenue.
I think Kevin raises a good point about people maybe not wanting to take the hit raw at once, but I like the idea of splitting it, and I also think that you'd see what the market will bear, the one time that they, or the first time they did it, right, you said there were sixty-three bids for thirty-two spots, something like that, thirty-one spots, sixty, so, two to one, right, and, um, so maybe there would be a few people who'd be off- put, and maybe some people who would be upset that, well, it only cost, you know, a hundred dollars for a quarter, for a, a, obviously a smaller period last time, but I think most people would understand that this is for revenue for the town, and also for ease, and is still markedly less expensive than the less attractive lot. For people who are going to park at that time, right? If I, if I, since I, well, I don't, I walk, but before we moved, I was in the lower lot, because I was on like the six-something train, so I wouldn't have paid. And that may be part of the issue, is where people aren't in town, or anything.
And we pay, we plow Old Town Hall, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so that's a cost to the town, and I'm sure this doesn't cover that cost.
That's a lot of factors that go into that, I mean, I'm guessing we would plow it anyway, because we do have equipment in the building in the back, to some extent?
Right, but it is, there is maintenance required down there, I think the police have to, the police peruse that parking lot, right, still?
I would assume so.
Yeah, so there is a cost to the town.
What would you do, Kevin, if, I, I can tell that you're concerned about the jump? On the, again, I think, I think, speaking of just the upper lot, not, not Old Town Hall.
Trying to keep focused on, the initiative was based on providing a benefit to residents before the thought of collecting extra revenue, and understanding that you could kind of kill two birds with one stone here. Uh, I think that, given the infancy of the initiative, I would feel more comfortable in doubling what we did last year, and going up to three hundred for the year on Liberty Lane.
But Liberty Lane was a hundred and five?
Hundred and fifty for the year, if you were to-
Oh, a hundred and fifty for the, okay, so, so do a classic double, double Old Town Hall and double Liberty Lane prior for the year, as opposed to the one-oh-five, six months.
That would be my proposal.
I think that's a nice compromise, what do you think, Chris?
I think that's fine, one-fifty for Old Town Hall and three hundred for Liberty Lane, it's fine.
It's very smooth.
That's fine, and see how you do, if you still have sixty-three people applying, you-
We reassess next year, you got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, uh, there is the understanding that when, I'm not going to say if, but when that area starts to get some commercial development, and some mixed use put in there, tho- those space, those spaces will need to be dedicated to those types of businesses that go in there, and will disappear, and we'll have to come up with something else at that time, but that'll be a great problem to have, once we get there.
Yeah, they're our worst problem.
All right.
Do you want to read the motion for that?
I sure do. Anybody have anything else, audience? Yes, sir?
Um, so I just wanted to make the comment that, in comparing with the, uh, MBTA rates for their lots, um, if people are Norfolk residents but aren't in Norfolk during the summer, or aren't in Norfolk during the winter, um, with the MBTA lot, they could pay for the months that they want, and, um, with what you're proposing, um, particularly with the higher fee, the, the four-eighty, people would be paying for a whole year, even though they might only be, um, able to use it for half a year, or for ten months of the year, something, just a consideration.
Yep, understood.
Yeah.
Um, you know, one of the other considerations here is we don't want to necessarily overencumber with administrative work to upkeep on these things, I think trying to minimize it and contain it to one transaction and one fell swoop helps to, you know, hit that on all ends, so, I understand what you're saying.
That was a three hundred?
Yeah.
Do I say it?
The total revenue for the two lots at those rates would be twenty-three thousand one hundred.
Per year? If I had a mic, I would drop it.
Decorative roof on each of them?
Right, yeah, but they're having, there, there better be bake sales. Need to see those.
Okay, so, with that being said, I move that the board set the parking permit rates for the following locations for October first, twenty nineteen, to some, September thirtieth, twenty twenty, as one hundred and fifty dollars per year for ninety spaces at Old Town Hall, and three hundred dollars for thirty-two spaces on Liberty Lane.
Second.
Further discussion?
Do we need to si- add the five-dollar second sticker to the motion?
You could, I mean-
But that's consistent, I think, what we're doing is we're setting-
Aaron, that's, I'm just making, I'm just asking questions.
I think it's fine, but if you feel more comfortable, that's no problem.
I don't, I'm not uncomfortable, I'm just, we're here, I'm asking, so no more discussion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who has one more?
Ju- just a quick one, you might want to re-read that on how you set it, thirty-two spaces for the hun- for a hundred and fifty dollars?
Uh, I thought I said three hundred for thirty-two spaces on Liberty Lane.
All right, three hundred dollars for thirty-two spaces, you're buying thirty-two spaces for three hundred dollars?
Three hundred dollars per year, for thirty, each for thirty-two spaces.
First, first spot is what you're selling.
Because the beginning of the motion said as blank per year, and then this one did not say as blank, so this was-
Yep.
Yeah, throw a slash, year.
Gotcha. What, what he's saying to is the individual-
Thanks, Ernie, I almost had thirty-two spots.
For each, for one of the-
All right, let's try this once more. "I move that the board set the parking permit rates for the following locations for October first, twenty nineteen, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty, as one hundred and fifty dollars per year per spot for ninety spaces at Old Town Hall, and three hundred dollars per year per spot for thirty-two spots on Liberty Lane."
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
We have one more.
Oh.
I don't understand why you're-
Why are you doubling it?
Well, the discussion kind of took a path where Selectman Weider had identified the opportunity, given the demand for the spots, to be able to offer a benefit to the residents, that was half of what they'd be paying at the MBTA lot.
Actually, less, more than half now.
Well, I'm saying, it was his initial proposal, and we actually brought it down from that.
I'm just saying, I think that's a steep increase to double something, I'm, that's all, I mean, do what you want to do, but, just comment.
Which we're about to do. Aye.
Go ahead, you know, I'm just commenting that I think it's a very steep increase, just in principle.
Understood, thank you. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have, "Please consider approving the request for use of Town Hill from the Girl Scouts for their annual kickoff party to be held on Tuesday, September tenth, from six PM to seven-thirty PM, with a rain date of Thursday, September twelfth, from six PM to seven-thirty PM."
The Girl Scouts, I guess, have, um, used Town Hill for this event for, uh, a couple of years, number of years perhaps, this is their annual kickoff, where they sell, that, they do their badge thing, and, and have some, some, uh, activity, I don't know, I haven't been, I'm sorry, um, and so, um, the board usually approves use of Town Hill, so that's why it's coming to you, um, there's a little bit of question about the, um, the fee to, um, for any, any possible damage to deposit, um, we've clarified for them that we just hadn't been fol- that the office had not been following it in the past, that we had every hope that we would turn around and give it right back to them as soon as the event was over, that there was no issues or damage, and I think they're, I understand that, so, um-
Yeah, does she understand?
Yeah, chief has weighed in on it, he's fine with it, they're expecting about, um, probably about a hundred people, seventy to a hundred people.
So we charge everybody uses Town Hill a hundred dollars?
Just as, as a quote-
Per, per event?
Per, per event or per, it's for season, uh, any, uh, the Cactus and Succulent Society was the first time this came up, um-
That's right, I remember, we talked about it.
We talked about it a little, a couple, a month or two ago, um, the farmer's market, I think, has been for the whole season, even though it is-
We charge them a hundred dollars for the whole season?
Yeah, and it's something, except, when we, when we started looking through the policy book, we realized that it had just gotten left, left behind and not followed, and we wanted to make sure that we were, um, and the goal is really just that people take care of it, pick up after themselves, leave it the way they found it, and if they don't, it gives us a small amount of money to send staff up there to take care of whatever the issue is, but really, the goal is more to get people to leave it as they found it and, and give it right back to them.
So then they get the money back?
Oh, yes.
But do we really, do we want to set a standard for like Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts? I mean, ideally, the whole principle behind these organizations is goodwill, community service, do we, I mean, it, it seems to me counter to what these troops represent, so we're saying we don't trust them, that they may leave it in the, in the condition they found it?
Oh, I, I don't want, I don't want people to think that, but with the same token, how do you differentiate between different groups?
Well, the farmer's market's a private enterprise, Succulent Society's a private enterprise, this is Girl Scout, Boy Scouts of Norfolk, I would assume.
I would assume so, I mean, having not been here through a whole year, a whole, uh, summer cycle of events, I, I don't have a lot of history, but it's certainly something we can revisit, I'm not stuck on this amount or the, or particular groups, but, um, I think it's good input, and we ought to talk about it some more, and decide maybe it needs to be adjusted in some way.
On the Thursday night recreations, do they charge seven hundred dollars for each band that comes up?
I don't think so, because it's a town event, it's sponsored by the town.
Town.
Town events for itself, we don't charge for, because it's, it's the town, it's sponsored by recreation, or, I'm not sure if library has any events up there, um, but it's, we're expecting that our own departments are going to make sure that those are followed, this has generally been in the past for groups that are not town-sponsored or town-organized.
I think, in the sake of consistency, it's good to be able to have one blanket procedure that we apply to everybody, that being said, one of our goals for this year is to establish deeper partnerships with both the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts here in town, and I think through those partnerships, we might be able to establish a, a, a set of standards for, you know, the use of certain facilities with the town for these organizations through those partnerships, um, and I think that's something we can definitely talk about moving forward.
Certainly nonprofits, and, you know, you can look at those as a group and decide to do something different than a group, say, as a farmer's market, if it is for profit, that could be different, I think we could look at all those things, um-
I would want to see it, I think, I understand what you're saying, but I would want to see it, if it's, if it is not the town, so it's an outside entity, private or a not-for-profit, I understand the need for, to establish a precedent that we're going to ask for a hundred dollars, and you leave it the way you found it, we're going to take it back, we're not singling out any organization, everybody has to do it, but if you want to say, not-for-profits have a lower amount, or we weave it, then, then that's, but I don't think you could just say, "We only trust the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts," like, I don't think we should be left to decide what organizations we think are not going to screw it up, um, because they're, you know, they're little kids. At the end of the day, like, the Boy Scouts, I, I have some Boy Scouts, and, you know, maybe some of them are running off and break something accidentally, and I know it's only a hundred dollars, but I, 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 I think it's maybe a good idea to figure out, are we going to create a different set for all not-for-profit versus just-
And what if it's not a, not a Norfolk group, it's a, I don't know, the American Cancer Society, I love them dearly, but, you know, maybe they wanted to rent Town Hill, are they different because they're not a Norfolk group, they're a national group, and I think that's where the shades of gray can get a little-
Right, but I do like the idea of maybe for not-for-profits, but they get it back, but-
Our goal is we don't even cash the check, here, here you go, thank you, glad it worked out, have a great rest of your summer, you know, or your first season, whatever it is.
Right.
We want people to just leave it as they found it, and it's, I think in the past, in most communities, it's simply a way to have people have a little more, you know, attention to-
At least the little kids littering a little bit.
Yeah.
But, so when would we talk about that?
If, um, with a little direction, we can draft a new policy and bring it back to you to look at. Kind of like to know where you, you think you'd like to head with it, and then we can put that together and see if that feels right, we can send it to groups that have had events and say, "What do you think, you know, if you'd like to give the board some input," so you can have that at your disposal as well to make a decision. Might be a good winter topic, while, while we, once we finish the season, and we can, you know, dwell on it before the next season starts.
I think that sounds good from my perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see how the, you know, what debris is there from after the bands are there, what does the DPW have to do?
Yeah, I would certainly want to get their input on, on what they experience.
Yeah, I mean, there could be, you know, could be greater for them. I mean, there could be, you know, could be greater for them.
Do they have a budget? Right? Like, does each, I mean, I'm assuming they do, right? Because they, the bands charge money.
Right.
And so they must have a budget set up, and does that budget include cleanup? And so is there a way to maximize? That's a great point. It's a good time to have a conversation about all of it.
Yep, absolutely. Mr. Alex, did you have your hand up in the back, sir?
All four of the Girl Scouts being able to go up there, as I am a honorary senior Girl Scout in the town of Plainfield. Town Hill, when it was built, was screwed up by the contractor. Nothing new for Norfolk. Two state inspectors, and I've never met a state inspector that's been any good. Town Hill was built too high. It was built higher than what was on the plans and specifications. I caught some of what was being done wrong with the weeping of water getting out from behind, but I never had access to the blueprints. It was built approximately eight inches to a foot too high where the walls are. The stonework for the walls was supposed to stop low enough so that the height of the walls would not exceed four feet. Four feet, as you will see in your town specifications. After four feet, you need a barrier, a fence. That has been brought up to, this is all previous to you people being on board. This was all brought up the previous selectmen, and they kind of put the nod, don't talk about it. I know our building inspector has been under a lot of heat lately, but I know twice the building inspector came to the powers-to-be and asked about it. I was over there Thursday night. Leader of the band took the microphone, and there was probably 75% kids there. I bet there was 500 small kids running around there. There's our schools. But anyway, he made a point of telling parents to keep their children away from the wall as it was dangerous. Now, if somebody does get hurt falling off that wall, where it's been brought up before to the town, I don't believe our insurance company has to come forward, because we had a hazard here for years, and we neglected to take care of it. Try doing that in your house.
Thank you. That makes sense.
No, I know that's kind of, I think you're, you're raising it as a side issue, because we're talking about Town Hill and not.
I only brought it up because you happen to be talking about.
Not, not abrogating or blocking the Girl Scouts from going, but.
Oh, no, no.
But it may be not a bad idea to explore the cost of fence and what it would look like and what it would, and it would, because it's not, if it's too high, and I'm saying if because I don't have the information, but I believe you, then that's a problem. And if somebody takes a digger, as they say, legal parlance, then that's an issue.
Absolutely.
Although it looks really nice without the wall.
Mr. Rosenberg?
I just want to comment that since repair or maintenance of the Town Hill would cost the same, no matter who did the damage, whether it was a town department or a nonprofit or a for-profit group, I would recommend a consistent deposit for all non-Town entities, regardless of whether they're a profit or nonprofit, or whether, regardless of, you know, their reputation. And the only reason I would not do that for the town, it doesn't make any sense for the town to give itself a deposit. So just my view.
I would have to say that, when, when you're mulling where we're all standing, I'm, I'm in the David Rosenberg camp, so write that down in your notebook for dear diary this day.
All right, so for the task at hand.
Okay, fine.
I move that the board approve the use of Town Hill on September 10th, rain date September 12th, by the Girl Scouts for their annual kickoff party.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Next, please discuss the board's intention to lay out various streets for acceptance at the fall special town meeting as follows. We have Tailwind Circle, Westfield Drive, Saddle Ridge, Liberty Lane, Meeting House Road, and Silver Fox Run.
So, housekeeping is essentially what this is. The six streets, they all have different issues about them, but we're trying to start, we're starting the process by which will result in town meeting approval to accept these as public ways. There's a memo in your packet from Rich McCarthy, which gives you the details of each of these. There's also a plan of each of these, and an overview by town council of the process that needs to happen. This is on discussion for tonight, just to simply understand whether the board is willing to move forward with all of these, and if you are at the September 3rd meeting, then we would formally ask, refer these to the planning board and DPW for them to write the required report that you would need to refer to. After which, you would have a public hearing closer to the actual date of town meeting to vote on the street acceptance process, and then town meeting relies on that information to actually vote to accept them. Some of them are very straightforward, that they're all ready to go. There are developments where the road is done, and it's laid out according to the plan, and there's no issues. Couple of them need a little bit of work, and the planning department is working on those, and two of them are related to, just up the street here, the former development that includes a portion of Liberty Lane and Meeting House Road. So that's, that's a very high-level overview, but that's really what the process is at this point. So bring it to your attention so that you'll know, hopefully you know and agree that at the next meeting, we would refer these to the planning board for further action.
Questions, comments, concerns?
No.
All right, so we do not need to take action.
Don't need to take action. You will at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And will they be doing a presentation, or anybody at the front of the planning board, or anybody on these, or, or Rich?
Let me check with Rich and find out. I'm not sure what his intentions were, but I will.
I went through his package, but I didn't know, was he looking for us to give feedback, or was he going to provide us with a presentation about each one of these?
I don't think he's looking for your feedback. It's more, this is more just typical process of what has to happen before any road could be accepted. Going through the selectmen, back to the, over to the planning board, back to the board, and then to town meeting. So, we don't, we didn't want to get to the next meeting if there were any concerns or issues that the board had on any of these that would be a reason why we wouldn't move forward from, from what you've read or what you know about.
Or what the planning board tells us.
Or what the planning board tells us. I mean, I expect that their report will be, you know, as needed, what we're looking for to be able to take the vote and refer them to town meeting, but that's their job to undertake that.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Our next item tonight is to please discuss the police substation located at 117 Main Street. Cece, I believe this was an item that you had brought up.
It was. So, I know that there's, I know that there's a memo, but now the live bodies, I thought it was just going to be the memo. The live bodies have arrived, sort of. You haven't sat in the meeting?
I do want to hear about streets.
Welcome to Stone.
Mr. Calcutta, how are you?
I'm glad you're here, because I just, I'm sure that some of it would be from, answerable from the memo, and the memo's online, too, as part of the package that people at home can read. But I just had a bunch of questions, and I figured that they were questions that other people may have, too, because I only knew about, because other people started asking me questions. And I'm like, what are you talking about? And then I was hearing more information, and so I reached out to Black and said, I'd like this on, so I can ask my questions. And if there's information that y'all don't have, that's fine. Go get the information, bring the information back. It can be a multi-step process, or all of the information can be had tonight. What I, where my question stemmed from was an understanding that I had, that reading the memo tells me that I may have been misinformed. But if I was misinformed, just by virtue of, you know, I didn't acquire the information correctly, or I was misled, I don't know. What I know is that I had been left, as every other towns person I felt, or the people who've spoken to me, had been left with the impression that the Building Safety Commission or the Police Department portion was going, didn't want to use the building we already had. We needed this new space, this new big, beautiful space. Didn't matter that it wasn't in downtown, because it was a mobile force. We're all, we're everywhere. We're ready. Panthers. We're going to pounce whenever we need to, like, all over town. So it was okay that it was out there. This big, beautiful space is built, phenomenal, lots of space. And then, a few weeks after it's done, the grand opening, all of a sudden, I hear that there's offices that are being renovated in what's now the fire station, and so it created some questions. And so, I listed out my questions, but they were essentially, this seems to suggest that that had been the plan all along. I had, my understanding was that the police station was the police station, and, and that there was not going to be, like, Brockton, or South Boston, or Roseland, or towns that have more than one traffic light, two police stations. But that's what we have. So I just, it created a lot of questions. So why do we need a space in the center of town when I thought we'd been told we didn't need a space in the center of town? It was okay that we were out over on, you know, where we are now.
Going back a number of years, sitting on the committee, they, it was, thought that it would be a good idea to have an office, and that's all, you're saying multiple offices, one office, that a member of the public could go to the station, request to speak to an officer, because it's called a duck station, so they could hit the button, they talk to a mech, and the officer can come in, take a report there, do almost everything that you can, you need to do in that office, and we, we would like to use the north sector car as the one who can do that.
So do you have a police officer assigned to that at all times, or it's just, it's, it's just a dark, that's what you mean by dark?
We have an officer assigned to the north sector, so he's going to stay on that side of Main Street.
Right, but if the officer is out and about on patrol, panther, then, then it's, there's not a, there's not a body dedicated to that office.
No, there wouldn't be anybody sitting there 24/7, no.
And that was, then you're saying that that's, that has been part of the plan all along?
Yes.
And so is the, how much did it cost?
What, how much did what cost?
The build-out. The carpet, like, the, the walls. There's nothing that was.
They put a door in. I, I don't, and I'm not, I don't have those costs in front of me.
In the, in the.
In this station down here.
Because what I heard, and that's, that's why I cared, right? Like, I don't care, other than, all of a sudden, I heard, oh, there was some reno done, there was some, we're waiting on the new carpet, and there's some other stuff that was done, and I was like, and so maybe I was misinformed, but I was like, well, if we're paying money for a door, or, right, because we know Cece's an idiot and cares about small accounts, but then, where's that money coming from and why? Why are we paying for it when we have this brandy-new, beautiful space? But if, if there, I mean, we paid for a sign, right, there's, we got our, was that in the original budget?
The sign that says, "Fire Station and Police Substation," that was a, that was paid for out of the overall project budget. It was a decision made when the prior chief was here to make sure that it was clear that it wasn't the police and fire station anymore, it was just fire and, and a substation. It's a temporary sign that just goes over the old one. It's, I think it's fairly low cost.
So what was done? Was there, what?
I'm going to have to check, because I'm not aware anything extra was done. I mean, I know the.
Aside from that door that you spoke of?
That's it. There was no carpet. I was misinformed.
Let, let, let me check.
I don't think we've done any carpet.
I mean, the fire department's been doing a great job of cleaning out certain areas, but they're not going to use that area.
Right, and that was my issue, is if there's, if, if you're spending, you editorial, not you, if you're spending money for a sign, or the sign not as much, or a door, or, or some drywall, or equipment, if you spend a couple hundred, or a thousand, or $2,000, and then it gets completely demolished, because there's going to be a new fire department, because we need to have something in the center of town that I thought we were told we didn't need. I just, that was where my issue got created, was why, why are we spending money, but you don't, so if you could find out.
The only other money I know we've been spending, and it was spent last week, was to do some air quality testing.
That's a difference, obviously.
You know, in the building, as terms of there were issues, people concerned about that, and, and using a little bit more of the space than the fire department had originally, wanted to make sure that that was safe. We're waiting for those results to come back, but I will check with facilities. I don't recall any other.
That was, that was my question, was what has been done in that space? What did it cost? And is it something that we can recoup? Like, are they gonna, right, is it going to get leveled, or?
And that's still up in the air. We don't know where we're going with that, so.
Right. Well, but if it had, if there had been some reno done, like, let's just, you're absolutely right. The fire station is, is up in the air, whether it's, it's a complete redo, if it's on that spot, they knock it to the ground and build something palatial, or, or they decide that they are equally panther-like and move somewhere else in town. But if they do, then, or they reno that space, if there had been money sunk into an office in that space, that's going to be gone in a year. That would be just another question that I would have. So I think that my questions all circle around what was done and what did it cost, because that then bleeds into, if, whatever happens with the fire station, is that going to blow the?
Of course. Yep, understood. And with the air quality testing, we just wanted to figure that out before we took any other steps beyond that, but I will check with facilities and get back to all of you.
So one thing I have as a gap chief is, if we had gone with the original plan, and we had built a new fire station there, you're saying that there still would have been a designated office for police use in that new building?
There was a discussion, the, the most recent discussion, there was always, we were talking about having an office, like, on a corner or in the back corner, so that we could entertain people who might be walking, as I wrote, you know, from the commuter rail, and it came in. So anybody that wanted, that came to the station, yes. We would, we were supposed to have an office. We changed that. The last meeting of the building committee, it was changed, too. It was going to be a police office, that animal control could work out of there, do the reports from there, and it was going to be a, what do you call it, a triage? Triage room for, for walk-in medicals, because they do have them, have them quite often, so. It was going to be three phases, so we would all, you know, work together.
Got it.
So that was in the last, or one of the last meetings?
Yeah, in the last month or two.
Was there discussion, just to dovetail with what Kevin asked, was there discussion about the need for something like this before a commitment was made to move the police station to the other end of town?
See if I understand your question.
So I'm probably not saying it very clearly.
No, it's probably what.
Prior to the purchase of the land that you currently have as your station, was there a discussion about the fact that you would still need a presence, or want a presence, a brick-and-mortar presence, because that's what this is, in downtown?
Yes.
That was part of the, and so that would be like in the minutes or something I could go and look at?
If I'm, if I'm understanding your question, yes, we, we were supposed to be able to have an office at this, once the decision was made that 14 share and a half was going to happen.
Right.
That we were going to have just a small office, and we picked the closest one to the lobby, and it's pretty small.
Right. No, no, because again, my recollection was how it was sort of sold, as why you wouldn't use the space that we, the land that was down the road, right, the old town hall, was because you wouldn't want to, wouldn't, we didn't need to have a central space. We didn't need to have that central allocation. So that, that's the piece where I'm saying I likely was misinformed. I just picked it up and heard what I thought I heard. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
Because that's why I was like, why? Why, if we had a nice building, I mean, not nice, but, you know, we had a lot that's kind of centrally located, and we said, no, thank you, we're going to go pay somebody else for their land. We already have our land, and then, but then, as soon as we've got the other land, then we're going to come back. It just, it created questions, but you're telling me that there, that if I go back and look, I'll see the discussions about the fact that even though we didn't want to use the land we owned, there was always going to be this office in the, in the.
That was my understanding of, in every meeting that I sat in, that we were going to have an office that started out with just two of us, the animal control and police, and then in more recent meetings, it moved on to that the fire would use it as a triage room for their walk-in medicals.
So prior to purchasing the property in, in the, where you currently reside, it's always been that you were going to leave animal control in the center of town?
Yes.
Why?
I keep answering this question, but it's more or less, it's centrally located, and we'd never designed the building for animal control to be at that building. So this one's easy. It's right off the lobby. So, I mean, I may not be answering your questions satisfactorily, but we, we had always said that she was going to be either here or at, at the old, at the, the old police station, fire station on 117 Main. It was going to be one of these two locations. We had talked about it.
And that was also before you purchased the, the land. You always had decided that you needed to have animal control in downtown.
That's what we thought, yeah.
So, yeah, if you could find out the information about what's been spent.
Yep.
On just the preparation of that office for police use?
Correct.
Right, yeah, okay.
So I, I just want to understand whether we're talking about one room that will have three uses, the, for, for the patrol in the north district, and animal control, and triage, all in one room, or are we talking about multiple rooms for those purposes?
I've thought it's always been, we're only going to be in the one room. And it's, I don't know what it, 14 by 18 or something like that. It's not a huge room.
But those three activities would all happen in that one room. Is that correct?
In the new building, is it?
No.
Oh, the old building?
Yeah.
But we haven't, we haven't got down to the effect whether it's going to be a triage room for the fire in the old building, but in the new building, that's what we talked about, and I think I said that earlier.
So I guess what I'm looking for is clarification about whether it is exactly going to be one room in the old building, or it might be more than one room, because you're adding possibly animal control and possibly triage as, as other rooms. Or it might be more than one room because you're adding possibly animal control and possibly triage as, as other rooms?
If we're sticking with just the old building, okay.
Yeah, we're just talking about?
Yeah. Then, then there hadn't been any discussion about that being a triage room recently.
So it's one room?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I think we're just putting, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I mean, we, when all these discussions were done, we were gonna build up a police station, and we were gonna renovate, renovate a fire station.
Right.
We're not doing, we haven't done that now.
My question is whether or not we put-
So the question is, is do we need, are we going to put, can animal control come up to town hall? I'm sure we can find, I'm sure there's places where animal control could come to town hall. Do we need a triage room? I don't know, fire departments here, they're far better at this than I am. What would we do in a triage room? And what's the value of that? So that's something we have to assess when we decide what, what will happen to the building down there. And as far as a police space, same thing applies. You know, we have to first decide is, what are we gonna do with that building? Are we gonna renovate, or are we gonna rebuild it? Then we get into the cost issue, can we allocate rooms for these type of things? You know, is there opportunity here for animal control to move to town hall? There seems to be a lot of space here. So we have, I think there's a lot of, a lot of unanswered questions that we can't answer here tonight, other than to know that currently animal control is in the fire station. And I guess we, you can ring a buzzer at the fire police station, and you'll get the dispatch which will get a police officer to you.
That's correct.
So I, my only question, I understand what you're saying about cart before horse, I'm not that far down the road. I'm not, I'm just asking what was spent, what was done? And is it gonna get blown up whenever they do whatever they're gonna do with the new space? So it's different.
I would like to know more about a triage room, I don't know if the fire department wants to address that at this point, but it would be, I just, any-
Just walk-in medical, people are in the front lobby, chest pain, fingers bleeding, we have to treat them.
So we don't do it via, we don't do it via ambulance, we actually do, we could actually do it in a, in a designated space?
Something more than hardwood or tile.
So if somebody comes in, we can start treating, if somebody's cut their finger off, we can start treating right away.
Okay.
Rather than going to get the ambulance and pulling it around.
Gotcha, yeah.
So we assume it's not carpeted then, right?
I, I don't know, I don't know.
The room was carpeted before.
Well, I'm just saying, if people are coming in without fingers, maybe you want something you can hose down.
And that discussion was on the new building.
I know, I know that that's not about this room.
I'm sure that room will probably have a floor that you can wash, instead of-
Something that you could just with a bucket, you know?
Yes, 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 absolutely.
People coming in with their kids.
Okay, so it sounds like we have our takeaway items on this?
Do you understand what you're, okay, thank you, I'm good.
Very good, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is to please discuss the structure of the fall special town meeting.
So it's time to talk about fall town meeting. In your packet are two items. One is a, I like schedules, I like making sure I need, know what I need to do to be ready for town meeting. So there's a schedule in here that has us opening the warrant at the next meeting on September 3rd. To get us to a November 19th special town meeting at Freeman Candy School. And the second page is what we start as a list of possible articles. Based on things we typically do at the fall town meeting, or things we know, know we need to do. And it's come up as we start to think about this, realizing that there, there are more than likely a few zoning articles. And those can be time-consuming, they're very detail-oriented. And does the board want to, you start to think about how we structure the order of the articles? Or do we need more than one night to do them? We wanted to just have that general conversation now, so that as we get into the process. At one point, the board's gonna need to decide, when we get, we open the warrant, we get all the articles, and then we close it. You know, what ones are we, are we leaving on, what order are they gonna be in? Maybe some input from the moderator about all of this would be helpful. I have 14 articles right now, just what I've talked with Todd about and come up with, but they're, they're like, there may be more.
That's not including anything zoning related, so?
Right now, we just, I just have something regarding the B1 center. The zone two for protection for Holbrook well.
Site plan approval, right?
Site plan approval, and?
But those are two rather large zoning articles.
They are, you know, some towns like to do them by, you know, spending money, then by general bylaws, and then by zoning. Some like to mix it up and go throughout. It's our first time together planning one, so it seemed like a good thing to, to start to talk about for the future.
The only thing I don't see on here which concerns me, and maybe you've already thought it through, is in May, it was very, very well represented. That people want to know where we ended up with the police station. And we talked about that as a, as a fall town meeting, and then we talked about maybe a separate meeting.
Right.
So, and I don't see it here. So is the, is the plan to do a special meeting to explain the police department prior to town meeting?
Well, I think we could handle it a couple of ways. I would argue it's on here if you wanted to have it as a report to town meeting. We always have an article about that. So it could be a motion where the, we could discuss that project, a report to the town, for people to ask questions about and, and answer. I think we do need to talk about where we are with any litigation and on cost recovery. And do we want to have a report, or to have a special meeting about this before we finish that? Before we've started that? I think that's a discussion that the board should undertake at some point. I don't, I want to have it at the right time, but I'm not sure exactly what the right time is.
I wouldn't want litigation. I think people would be very, we'd be very remiss to say, we can't discuss that because we're in litigation.
I get that.
Because litigation could take two to three to four years. I think it would, I think we'd be remiss in not giving a report. I mean, whatever report we give is gonna be the same information we give to prosecutors, or to, to attorneys. So I don't, I, I'd hate to see us use the excuse of it's in litigation or executive session.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to use that as an excuse. Maybe better said, I want to make sure that we don't in any way, by, by helping the public on, get up to speed about what happened and why. I wouldn't want to in any way limit our ability to recover any money because we spoke in open session about something that we, in hindsight, would have preferred not to, that's all.
Yeah, well, that's why I said maybe we need to, part of this discussion, the special time meeting, is that discussion of that meeting.
Yep.
Up to discuss for the public what we're, what the report is for the police station.
Right.
And we can always discuss that these are, where we're going with it. We're going to hire prosecutor, a special prosecutor, we're gonna do this.
Right.
The main value I saw in this meeting, wherever it may fall, was the ability for the general public to be able to come up and ask questions of the people who were involved in some of the decision-making or execution or whatnot, to be able to give them that kind of forum. My personal feeling is that town meeting might be a little too structured and a little too formal for that.
I agree.
I, I would like to make it casual and approachable so that people feel comfortable coming up and asking questions.
I agree.
And not have to feel like they have to abide by different standards.
It can be at one of the schools, I mean, the right place to hold, you know, the number of people who want to come and talk about this important topic.
I just think as soon as you say fall town meeting, that, that's one of those tenants that people are gonna go, what about?
Sure.
So I, that's why I want to bring it up, is we want to get this, we, we want to get over this hurdle. And I think, and you, you know, we talked about this in May, and guess what, we're here in September. And in two months, it's November, so it's, it's shocking how quickly time passes. So I think we have to, we have to really figure that one out.
Yes.
Along with town meeting, obviously, but we need to figure out that meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the zoning articles, I think, I think you gotta put zoning articles probably on a separate night, just because they're, they are laborious. And, you know, some people don't have any interest in it, and others do. And, you know, it'd be great if everybody had an interest, but they don't, and for obvious reasons. But I think it becomes, these two zoning articles could take you into the wee hours of the morning. And, you know, budget transfers take, you know, sometimes that takes an hour. The report from the school tends to run a half hour. I think you, you start looking at budget articles at 10 o'clock at night, zoning articles at 10 o'clock at night.
I understand.
I think zoning articles would be well-served, especially where we have these B1 articles, which are, they're comprehensive. I mean, you read through it, it's pretty extensive. I think it'd be well-served to do that on a second night, or, or if we want to do that the second night or the first night.
Right.
I think it's a good idea, my opinion.
Absolutely.
I was unaware that we could do that.
Well, I mean-
I mean, I thought you have however many articles you have, and then the moderator runs the meeting. And if it doesn't get done within the time limit that the moderator has set, then you go to a second night. I was unaware, I don't know that you can-
You could post two separate meetings, two separate specials, one on one night, one on the next night. Or you could have a pre-arranged, you know, discussion with the moderator that, you know, you'd like to see these all in a night when people are a little fresher. And that there'll be a general consensus that you're gonna recess the meeting, it, when you're finished with article, you know, 17, whatever it is. And pick up again with 18 on the next night, or something like that.
If you can get him to, yeah.
I mean, he has seen-
He may agree, but I just don't, I, other than saying we're gonna do two separate, I would be, without his agreement, I don't know that you can-
Right, so, I mean, I've, I've sent these to him, he's aware of the, of the discussion. He wasn't, he was at another meeting on the Cape Town, so he wasn't sure he could make it up here. But perhaps we could ask him if he can come on the 3rd, and we can, when we open the warrant, we can talk about it a little bit more. Let's try and sort that out.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Do you have any feelings about the schedule, or? All right, so we'll pick this up again on the 3rd, hopefully Mr. Talaman in attendance. Next item we have on our list is to please discuss the potential of implementing a public comment period to the board's agenda.
So a number of communities offer a public comment period for residents, or just anyone who wants to come and speak to the board on a topic that's not on the agenda. Some have them at the beginning of the meeting, some have them at the end of the meeting. And besides that, as, as we've been doing tonight. Towns will generally allow residents to speak on a specific issue that's already on the agenda, if they have something to add or a question that, that they want to ask. With decisions about open meeting law and, and freedom of speech in the last year or two. There have been more towns adopting an actual policy on this to be clear about how a meeting is going to run. And to be clear how the board will handle situations where perhaps a member of the public's getting a little boisterous with how they're approaching things, and how, how they will be dealt with to hopefully get that back, back in line and back in the area of appropriateness. So this is one from a, a nearby community, there, we can certainly get you others. We've, we've struck in all the references to that community, and just put it in front of you, I think you've seen this version before, as a place to start. I have not run it by town council, I know it's been run by the council of that community. But wanted to just put it out there for you to, to discuss and see where we go with this topic.
I have a partner of mine at my firm who is a selectman in Stoughton, who's been there for a number of years. And they have, and he was talking about the fact, it's something that we don't have, but they, a lot of towns have sort of the perennial gadfly that sits in the front row and complains, and looking for, is animated would be the word I would use in relation to what you were talking about, who just is mean, and all of the time. And what they do is they have the public commentary at the very beginning. I feel, like, I kind of think we currently have a very organic meeting, right? Everybody sort of seems to participate, everybody seems to take terribly long, it seems to work. But I'm also personally open to the idea, you know, he said his is a limited amount of time that people can speak, sort of ala the old-school town moderator, limiting people speaking. But it, it happens at the beginning, obviously, then they're not able to sort of opine as things happen during the meeting. But they're, the town meeting agenda, I mean, the meeting's agenda is posted, so they know what it is that they want to speak to. And then they are, for two who have, they are to forever hold their peace during the rest of the meeting. So no hands raised, it's just they get their, their say at the beginning, and then the meeting continues. For them, it works. I don't know, I mean, on the one hand, I like it, but I also think there's value, just to use tonight's meeting as an example. You know, maybe Ernie would have spoken about the railing in relation to the Girl Scout petition at the beginning by looking at the agenda online. But maybe it occurred to him more organically during, right, I don't know. So I don't have an answer, I kind of like the idea, but at the same time, I sort of like how this works too, so long as it's, I mean, but again, there've been nights, oh my God, he's raising his hand again. I like it at the beginning, and that's it.
I think that the public, in this particular scenario, the public comment period is for anything that's not on the agenda that the public wants to come talk about. I'm unhappy about the status of potholes on, on-
That's actually a great idea, though.
I think, I think if you look back, Norfolk used to-
That's actually a great idea.
Did have a public comment period in the beginning of their meetings.
It's a great idea.
And for some reason, it disappeared. But at one point, I think there was a period when Norfolk did, at the beginning of the selectman meeting, was a 15-minute public comment sector.
Yeah, that's actually-
And I think it's, it, just to your point, if it's not on the agenda, someone wants to speak their piece. If no one comes, then we move on to the agenda.
Right.
But it allows people, obviously want to vent to do it.
I like that.
And I think we used to have it years ago, I don't know-
When he was talking, it was sort of about everything, and I assumed, which it is-
Do you remember David?
I assumed it was about-
No, I don't remember.
That it would be people coming to talk about the agenda item.
And generally, towns don't necessarily interact with people as, say, they're coming to complain about potholes on Smith Street. They may not have the information, or it might be a situation where they just, isn't appropriate to comment. So generally, it's not a two-way conversation, it's more of a, I came to tell you how unhappy I am about this issue, you know, I want you to do something about it. The board looks to me and says, Bryce, look into that, get that dealt with, you know, or take it up at another meeting, whatever it is. And the person has had the chance to say what they want to say about it and move on. And then things that come up, like tonight, as you mentioned, organically, it's up to the chair to decide how much latitude that person's gonna give the public to talk about such things or not.
Right.
And what to do if people get animated.
I like, I'll deal with the animated one.
Yeah. Mr. Alex?
With the looks of things, your people are gonna be quite busy on every night coming up. How about some thought to select one of the Tuesdays? You meet on Tuesday, the first Tuesday would kind of be a bad one, but if you take the second or third Tuesday, and have one once a month. Then start with a small agenda, so you'll have plenty of time after the agenda. Nobody shows up, you get to go home early.
I think that the intent of having it at the beginning of the meeting is not to have people be stuck waiting around as we argue about the intricacies associated to some of the fun things that we talk about during these meetings.
But if, but if you have everybody here at once, they'll start talking with each other before the meetings, and, you know, either for or against what another person is saying. Another suggestion is down the line, on one of those meetings, have available, maybe somebody from the highway department, fire department, police department. Wouldn't have to be all on the same night, just have them available on one night, which is made the night that people can come and vent their spleens, you know, do what they want to, bring it forward.
Yikes.
Well, as it pertains to the open comment period for this board, I think the benefit of having it be in an open session that we have a posted meeting is that you're able to address the board as a whole. If somebody wants to address an issue they have with the fire chief, they're more than welcome to go visit the fire chief and do that at their leisure. So I don't know if it necessarily would be a requirement to have those people available during open meeting sessions at night, or unless we had something specific to talk about.
It would just be a perhaps, you know?
Yeah, no, no.
Bring them in on a certain night, people would know that that particular person is here.
Available, right, understood.
Maybe once a year, that person would come.
Got it. So Rosenberg?
So I, I had made a suggestion along these lines at one of the last meetings of the prior board. And so I appreciate Kevin, you bringing this forward into this board. I think that the style of this that I would prefer to see is pretty much what Blythe described. That is, saying that if members of the public have a comment that's germane to a particular agenda item, that they could ask to have the floor to- agenda item, that they could ask to have the floor to address their comment in that agenda item, but if they have more general comments that are not pertinent to any agenda item, that there be a public comment period, that they could raise whatever issues that they choose to. And I like the idea of having that at the beginning of the meeting so that people don't need to wait. And I think that having made some comment during that initial comment period, if the person then has something else related to a particular agenda item, they should be able to raise it. So I strongly endorse this, I'd like to help with it. I'd also like to help with other things for more transparency and more citizen engagement. And so I thank you for your efforts so far, and I'm available to help with additional efforts.
Thank you.
I know there's a question with a gentleman in the back, but before I forget, it pops in my head, I would imagine, no, I haven't read this, but I would imagine that when people come and they're speaking on, they're venting their spleen on an item that's germane to them, but not necessarily what's been posted, I'm not able to engage with them, because at that point, I have violated the open meeting law by, by opining with my brethren present on an item not posted, right? I mean, it could just go to you with like-
We do-
"Oh, I'll take this under advisement," because if we start a conversation about something that they've raised, and it's obviously an item that hasn't been properly posted, it's an issue, right? So people would just have to know that, I can't-
I think that's why the policy's written in a way, say, "We're not necessarily going to engage you," not because we don't want to.
But we can't.
Because we can't.
Because we probably can't. If it's a very simple thing, like, yes, we know that the street paving starts tomorrow, and we can easily answer a very specific question.
If it doesn't require deliberation, or-
Doesn't require deliberation, but if it's something more than, for their benefit and for ours, we want to make sure we get back to them.
Well, and I, but I'm just saying, I mean, harkening back to when we were speaking about folks who can become more animated than others, if two of us agree verbally about an item that's incredibly simple, one could argue that that would meet the definition of deliberation, and they'll be-
But also, don't forget, the law does allow you, that if you couldn't have known that something was going to come up, you can legally add it to an agenda. I mean, you're supposed to post, post forty-eight hours in advance, but if something happened and we needed to add an agenda item that we could not have known-
And does that protect you from?
I think it does. I don't, I don't, I would see you maybe, perhaps, having some deliberation, but I don't think you'd be making any significant decisions.
No, no, not decisions, but I think that the definition, I know David's going to chime in, but there was a guy behind him who-
I just want to comment on the open meeting law part, because I consider myself an open meeting law authority.
I know you do.
So the open meeting law specifically says that, in addition to the emergency considerations that Blythe was mentioning, it's also permissible, it's required that the agenda list everything that the chairman anticipated would come up, and could reasonably have anticipated. But if there's something that the chairman could not have reasonably anticipated, the public body is permitted to deal with it if it's raised.
Okay.
And this is why we put a note at the bottom, I believe, that says, "Any other unanticipated business that may become before the board is kind of like a catch-all for those types of things."
Right, and you couldn't anticipate-
So if it's something easy, you're protected, but if it's something bigger, then you're better served kicking the can to-
Much appreciated, we'll follow up.
Yeah.
Yep. Sam, I'm sorry, what do you got back there?
No, I think I understand. I thought it was in addition, I thought it was in place of the gagging article.
Do we have to hold the microphone in front of you?
All right, yeah. Yeah, my question was answered, I think you guys are trusted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so as it pertains to the proposed, or the template policy, was there any notes that anybody had, or things that jumped out at them as things of concern?
No.
I'll run it by town council, just to make sure that they, they don't have any issues with it, but, and they may, they may have helped other towns with these, so if they have any other ideas, I'll, I'll let you know. Otherwise, we can bring it back for you to approve at another, at the next meeting.
The only thing that I wanted to discuss was if we needed to have comments or subjects submitted before the meeting. I know that that kind of takes away from the point of having an open period for comment, but that would give us the ability to at least prepare in some sense in the situations where that was possible.
I think it would be nice to include the policy that, you know, people who wish to come before the board, it's recommended, it's appreciated, if information can be provided in advance, but not required.
Yeah, perfect.
I think that would create a barrier for people.
I don't think you want to require it, I think you take away from the spirit of what you're trying to achieve.
Which is what we're trying to do.
If they have the ability to, great.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments, questions on open comment period? Cece?
Nope.
All right, on to some warrants. Cece, I believe-
Let me just thank you very much for, for considering the open comment period this way. I am very appreciative.
You're very welcome. I will say that it isn't just one member who's initiated this, I think both Chris and Cece, upon getting on the board, it was one of the things that they identified as being important as well.
So my thank you goes to all of you, the entire board, and the town administrator.
All right, so now on to our warrants. Cece, do you want to go first? I got it right quick, come on.
Got it. I flipped forward to the page where they were on, and realized it's easier on the, the agenda. All right, so I move that the board approved the following warrants, June 30th, 2019, 20,000, Jesus, June 30th, 2019, tired, 54 V S 19, $10,995.15. July 9th, 2019, that one's going to get me every time, 54 V 19, $626,653.16. And July 9th, 2019, O2 V 20, $438,572.56.
Hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I move to approve the warrants dated 7/16/2019, in the amount of $1,352,431.68. Dated 7/19, in the amount of $101,471.98. Dated 7/21/2019, in the amount of $486,109.11. Dated 7/23/19, in the amount of $175,005.38. And 7/25/2019, in the amount of $787,585.52. And dated 7/30/19, in the amount of $230,829.50. And that is it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Weider?
I move to approve the warrant of 7/23/2019, for $333,076.26. 7/30/2019, for $348,568.41. 8/2/2019, the amount of $444,892.06. And on 8/6/2019, the amount of $1,837,849.16.
Hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up, please consider the approval and release of regular and executive session minutes.
May I ask a-
Sure, go right ahead.
We were both wondering, the, these amounts are from, are the budget?
These amounts are the budget.
These amounts of, associated with these warrants are, are budget expenses to run the town.
Correct.
They were voted on in spring.
In May?
Yeah.
From May?
Right. And then as money needs to get spent, it's spent.
Right. They're reoccurring expenses.
Okay.
They've been approved and budgeted. Yeah.
All right, Cece, would you like to go through some minutes approvals?
Sure, I've been sent a couple, and I looked them over, and they looked great. So, I guess it was sent two, right?
We had three, May 21st, June 24th, June 25th.
Okay, well, so two came over, I think maybe two came at once, and then one came-
Okay, yep.
And they all looked fine. So I move that the board approved the minutes of the May 21st, June 4th, and June 25th regular meetings.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we had two sets of executive session minutes that the board approved at their last meeting and determined were ready for release. And so tonight, we have a motion to have you officially release those minutes.
Want me to read that one, too?
Yes, please.
I move that the board release the following sets of executive session minutes, April 23rd, 2018, and May 20th, 2018.
Hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one more set from July 9th to catch up, and then we'll be caught up on all of our regular session minutes. We've got a couple sets of executive session minutes to get you, and then we should be done with backlog.
Don't we also want to do June 4th, to cheat, you didn't do June 4th open meeting, open?
Yes.
Did she just do June 4th as well?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't hear you say that.
Yep.
I thought you did the May one, but not the June.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Well, that is everything we had on our agenda this evening. I had one thing I wanted to report in on, from our B1 Working Zoning Committee, we had another meeting last night. We're really honing in on what we're planning on presenting to the other supporting boards and committees in town, and hopefully what we'll be presenting to the community at Fall Town Meeting. The next phase in that development cycle is that we're going to be holding another community meeting for the town and for the residents to come and discuss and hear a presentation on some of the proposals that are being made and the reasoning behind them. That is going to be on Thursday, September 12th, at 7:00 PM at Freeman Kennedy. So we're hoping that we can get an abundance of interested residents to come and participate and provide some feedback as we prepare for those proposals coming up at Fall Town Meeting. Anybody have anything else?
You're, you've got the fire chief.
Yes, that process is well in hand. We interviewed eight candidates, 29 applications. We interviewed eight candidates, we being myself, the HR director, the fire chief from Foxborough came up and assisted us with this. And observing but not participating was the deputy chief of Norfolk. We, the three of us who voted chose four of the eight candidates to move forward to an assessment center. That is scheduled for next Tuesday, August 20th. They'll all be in town to participate in that. And from there, I will, I will interview what I anticipate will be three finalists. And I spoke with town council to be clear what the process needs to be per the Town Administrator Act and the, and the law about the appointment of strong fire chiefs. It's his opinion, Labor Council, that I can bring forward one candidate to recommend to the board, for the board to ratify. But in speaking with the chairman, we were discussing perhaps bringing the top two candidates. I would give you a recommendation, but the board would have the opportunity to see the difference between the two, and, and hopefully we're all in, in agreement about which is the best one. I'm targeting September 3rd, I'm going to get there to do that and keep this moving forward. And I'll keep you apprised about how that's going. I just need to get people in to meet with them and have the one-on-one, that I think it's important to make sure that whoever we're putting forward as finalists is a really good fit for Norfolk. May want to try to get them to have some time with current department members, and want to fit that in, and it may, may take a little bit longer. But that's the course that we're on. It's going well. So happy for any feedback or questions that you have.
Good.
Great.
Big priority for the summer, get that done.
Yes, absolutely. Cece, anything?
Nope.
Blythe, anything else?
No.
Anybody else in the audience this evening have anything else for the group? Just couldn't pass it up, could you?
No, I can't. So I just want to say that I'm really very pleased with the way this board is operating.